All right, we're gonna get going. Good evening, welcome to the January 8th, 2019 zoning board adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who is the deputy planning manager for the city of Nashville. Across from me, I have Jay Bin Kara. Welcome, our new alternate member. We have Mr. Steve Lionel, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Jack Courier, our vice chair.
This is Mary Ellen McKay, our secretary.
And I'm JP Boucher, your chair tonight. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript and also is video recorded. We ask that you please direct all testimony into the microphone and we only ask that only one person speak at a time. If you don't have tonight's copy of the agenda, it's on the back table. There's only two cases tonight, so it's pretty straightforward. Tonight we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. I'll explain each of those. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance prevents only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: one, the requested use must be listed in the Table of Use Regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashville. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interests; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashville bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve an application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. Any citizen has a right to contest a decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark in the city of Nashville Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant the rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's meeting is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case. I'll go, the order of testimony will be as follows, but with only three people in the audience for two cases, I think there may not be any issues here, but I'll go over that quickly. Testimony as follows, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limited five minutes to testify. Then those in oppositions or with questions will have a limited five minutes each to testify. Then the applicant then would have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then a representative, only one person of those in oppositions or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Again, we ask that you please direct all testimony to this board and not to the audience. If you have any questions about any application, they have to be directed to the board and we'll get those answered. Second part of tonight's meeting is called a public meeting, where the board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence yourselves phones. If you need to have a conversation, we ask that you step out in the hallway. And again, we have five full-time members here tonight, so we'll all be voting on cases unless any one of us is recusing himself, in which case Mr. Bin Kara would be able to vote. Mr. Bin Kara is here as an alternate, but will be participating in both the public hearing and the public meeting is input, but will not vote if we have five full-time members to vote, so just want you to understand what is happening. Mr. Fark, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Is there any questions for the audience before I start? Okay. I'll call the first case, which is owner Arthur and Diane Dionne. Applicant is Nick Dionne, 26 La France Ave. Description is as follows: Arthur P. and Diane T. Dionne, owners, Nick Dionne, applicant, 26 La France Ave., Sheet 48, Lot 130, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 for an accessory use area, forty percent allowed, sixty-eight percent proposed, to construct a 20-by-40 carport in the back of a garage. That's in the R.A. zone. You come on up. Just state your name and address, please, and...
Your home address?
Yes, your name and address and tell us what...
My name's Nicholas Dionne. I live at Eight State Street in Hudson, New Hampshire.
Could you move the mic up or hold the mic in your hand?
Sure. Yeah, let me do it. It's hard to hear. Okay. Got it? That's fine. My name's Nicholas Dionne. I live on Eight State Street in Hudson. Diane and Arthur are my parents. They live at 26 La France Ave. They're looking to put a carport up behind their existing garage to house a camper that they have. They're not here tonight because they're in Memphis, Tennessee camping right now, so I guess the rules are, I'm not sure whether the variance is for the size roof or the size structure that it is. I don't know if you guys can answer that?
So what happens is that we look at the percentage of what the house occupies over the lot, so, you know, in your case, in your parents' case, we could say that they have a smaller house in a very large lot.
Yep.
Okay, so there's a percentage that we're looking at as opposed to the house.
No, the issue is actually the ratio of the accessory unit size to the house size. The lot size is not relevant here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Carter, do you have...
Well, basically, the house we have at 1,927 square feet of finished space, and when you add the carport, which is 800, and there's smaller sheds in the backyard, that add up to 518 square feet. So we have a total of 1,318 square feet of accessory structures out of, and you divide that into the 1,927, that's where we get the 68% of the accessory use area, where the lot is 40. That's why he's here.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a ranch house and then their garage. Is their garage considered accessory, or is that part of the house?
It's considered accessory if it's separated from the house, detached from the garage.
Okay, so their attached garage is part of the structure. I don't know what else there is you guys want from me, or as far as answering questions? Sure?
Yeah, go ahead.
Two questions, okay. One, what is the peak height of the garage?
I don't know the actual peak height. I know the camper is somewhere around, they have a fifth-wheel travel camper. It's somewhere around 13 six to the top of the air conditioning units.
The application says that it's 14 feet high at the walls, which is fine. There's two issues. One, the second question is related to that. How far from the lot line is this? Because this picture obviously is not representative of what you're doing, because this is, you don't have this built.
Correct.
But it was difficult for me to tell from the drawing. There's a 10-foot setback.
Yep.
Side yard setback, so it will be more than, at 10 feet or more from the side yard.
Yes, definitely.
From the side yard setback, okay.
And he has plenty of room, you know, he has an acre lot there, but he has plenty of room to move it.
Sure. Okay. The other issue is the code puts a limit of 20 feet maximum height on an accessory structure, so as long as it's on...
I believe it's a four pitch, so if you take the 14, figure out the dimensions of it, it's a four pitch, so it's not a very steep pitch on it. So I don't believe the height should be anywhere near.
Right. I'm just pointing out that as long as the peak is 20 feet or less...
Less.
You won't need an additional variance for that.
Okay.
So that's it.
Awesome.
Mr. Fark had a comment?
Oh, Mr. Bin Kara has a question.
If I could just ask, of course, you mentioned a trailer, but when I'm reading the application, it says you're three trailers?
No, he has a, so he has a vintage car, a '61 Impala that he has all restored, and he has like a 70-something camper that is restored and it matches the car. So that's one trailer, is that camper. And he doesn't use that in the winter, obviously, so that would get stored under there. And his other camper is the one that they're traveling in now, that they use all summer and then they're, this is the first year they're leaving for the winter. They both just retired this year, so they'll be down there for three months now, and then when they come back, it'll be under the carport if it's there. And then they have like a flatbed trailer over there.
Any other questions?
I guess when I looked at the property, you know, there's a rendering here of, and you had stated it's behind the garage.
Yep.
So I think Mr. Lionel clarified that it's gonna not be within 10 feet of the side yard setback.
No, I believe is, I believe the current attached garage is somewhere between 15 or 20 feet away from the, or maybe even more away from, because you can drive down the side of his house with the campers and stuff like that, and then the garage would be behind that garage.
Because I guess when I saw this picture, I thought, oh, that's really tall and it's very close, and I thought maybe this was built, when I went to look at the site, I said, okay, no, this is...
Yeah, I don't even think that one's specifically the right height or anything.
Right, I figured after seeing the place that this was just an example.
Yeah, from the business that's gonna do the structure, yeah.
It was, it's unclear to me, because I have to say, this is like, you know, like an airplane hangar almost, you know, it's pretty darn big, and to me, that would be, you know, I think very visible, like from the neighbor's property, but your parents have a big lot, this is gonna be behind it, you know, the topography kinda goes up, so I don't know if you would even see it from the street.
Their topography goes down.
After the house.
Yeah, the house is the highest portion.
Yeah.
So...
Because I saw the land kinda went up and then you didn't see anything after that, so I didn't know it went down. It certainly didn't keep going up.
Nope.
And I thought, well, maybe you won't even see something, even if it were up to that 20 feet from the street, but I'd just rather have your testimony as to how you think it'll look from the street or the abutter's house.
When you pull up to their yard, like I said, you maybe have a 15, 20-foot section on the left of their house, then you have their garage, which is, it's two regular bays and then a man door is, so it's approximately 30 feet wide, maybe, their attached garage. And then they have a decent-sized roof on that, because the back of their garage has a wall, and then it has like another 10 feet of like space in the back to pull in, like lawn mowers and stuff. So the roof lines, I think on the garage, is taller than the actual houses, so if you were at the street, I don't even think that you would see the height of the carport behind that garage. If you looked down the side of it, you would see it. I don't think you'd see it looking at the house.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Can be honest, like to speak in favor of the application? Thank you. Anybody would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? There is no opposition, so we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I was ahead of myself earlier, so I was already thinking, when I had looked at this property and gone, and I saw the same thing you saw, Mr. Courier, is the property had gone off, and I was thinking that, standing at the street, I didn't know what you would actually see with this built here, and I too was looking for this. I thought they had gotten in trouble or, you know, somebody had caught it, but as I was looking in the camera, I was trying to visualize, I know they usually follow there's some other places in Nashville that knows where people have the big motorhomes they park and how tall that is. But other than that, yes, the house is small, you know, the house is a modest house, it's still a good size. We have those other structures, but it's a large lot. And again, for me, at this point, at 68% sounds like a lot, but I think if we put it in perspective with the whole lot and that neighborhood there and where that's situated, I don't see, I didn't see any really, any issues for me that would be glaring. I thought the same thing about what would the neighbor see. Again, I think it's, if I'm not wrong, I don't think it affects really anybody or anybody's quality of life in the yard next to it, so I'm in favor of the application. What else? Mr. Courier?
I, you're pretty much, you know, I echo your thoughts. I thought, you know, that this was probably a violation coming before us, and I'm like, holy cow, you know, this is big and right next to the property, but obviously, that's not what's there. I was still concerned that, and I would be very open if there was, you know, testimony saying that this was gonna be a problem for an abutter, but we haven't heard any testimony. You know, and I'm thinking, on the other hand, it's a big lot, and I'm glad to hear that the topography goes down in the back, I was wondering about that, so I'm gonna take the applicant's son's testimony on face value that it, you know, it goes down and it'll barely be visible from the street. And, you know, it is a lot, probably the largest lot around, and there looks to be like an easement, maybe a power line easement on the right-hand side, so I think that's going in the benefit of the applicant, that it's not gonna be an issue for any abutters, and for that reason, I find support for it as well.
Thank you.
I pretty much concur. I guess the only thing, it's really just kind of a request for the applicant, and I realize I'm not trying to offer that we should do it as a stipulation or anything else, I just say, as much as you can exceed the 10-foot side yard setback, I think that would be still a preferred situation, so, but I think even, I think for all the reasons already stated, I'm fine with this application.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Lionel?
I support this application. My questions were answered.
Thank you. Any others have to comment?
I...
Mr. Courier? There you go.
I too support the application. When I first looked at it and I saw this picture, my instant thought was, oh my God, it is so tall. But that was not the case, and I'm glad that's not the case. And they do have a big lot, and I don't think you'll see it, I don't think it'll be a problem. But there is, I think it will be way past the 10-foot side setback, because you can drive around the side of that third garage, so I'm in favor.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Courier?
I'll make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion on behalf of Arthur and Diane Dionne. The applicant, again, is Nick Dionne. The address is 26 La France Drive, and again, the request is a request for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264. This code specifies a maximum accessory use area to be 40%, and the request before us tonight is 68%, and that's to construct a 20-by-40 carport behind the existing garage. I believe the board finds this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, which we've discussed, it's a rather modest house on a large lot, so even though the 68% is, you know, pretty far in excess of the 40%, the board finds it's reasonable to allow this rather large carport to house their vehicles. I think the board also finds another special condition is that the house is situated on the highest point on the property, and the topography drops off behind, and therefore, the impact of this large structural, per testimony, will be barely visible, if visible at all, from the street. Therefore, the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it'll not adversely affect property values of the surrounding parcels. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is done to allow this proposed 20-by-40 carport behind the garage.
Get some motions on the table to approve the area variance.
My seconded.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application has been approved. Just be aware that there's that 30-day window of appeal, highly unlikely, but just be aware, okay? Congratulations, thank you. You're all set. All right, I'll close case number one, and I'll open case number two. Case number two is owner John and Dawn Arthur, you know, I apologize if I pronounced that incorrectly, 79 Westwood Drive. Description...
John S. and Dawn M. Arthur, owners, 79 Westwood Drive, Sheet E, Lot 1832, requesting as following: one, a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-264, Table 53-1, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit;
and two, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32, to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet allowed, 896 square feet proposed, to construct a two-story addition on the right side of house with garage space on first floor and the accessory dwelling unit on the second floor. It's in the R9 zoning district. I'm sorry, JP. Mary Ellen, could you give JP the other mic, please, spare? The mic, turn it off, please. I'm being... Okay. So who's over here to present? Just give us your names and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is John Arthur. I'm at 79 Westwood Drive.
Yep, and my name's John Arthur, 79 Westwood Drive.
So we're requesting the variance to add the in-law apartment so that my parents can move into, to live with us. They are currently, my father's retired, my mother's retiring next month. They live in an apartment that isn't rent-controlled, so we're looking to, as they move to a fixed income, transition them to live with us so that they'll be better prepared as they, you know, age on and we don't have to worry about the finances of them paying for rent.
So there's a couple of things going on here, right? So there is the special exception for the in-law, and then there's the square footage overage. So can you just talk to us about your plan, and if you can speak of the mic, please, so we can hear?
So basically, it's where my driveway, the side of my driveway is, that's where I'm gonna build up to, so I'm not gonna take any more space other than what my edge of my driveway is now. So right now, I have a garage underneath my house, and basically, I'll have the, that's gonna become a room with a door, right? And then the garage will face the street, and just one floor, that's where they'll live on the top. Access to their apartment will be through the garage, or through my house, or maybe a back door even, but no front door.
So the square footage that you're asking for overage, explain, I think I know why, but explain to me why it's 896 and not 750? Why are you asking for the extra? Why does that present itself that way?
Well, just so it's not awkward-looking to what I have now on my driveway, you know, the edge of my driveway, so I figured I'd just take it to where I'm already paved up to, and just to make it, and give them a little extra room as well, you know? So it's not so tight and cramped, you know?
Can I add to that as well?
Sure.
I think the extra footage comes in with the extra bay in the garage as well, and the reason for that is, again, we have two vehicles, my husband and I are, you know, have vehicles, we work full-time, so with the additions of my parents, they will also have a vehicle, so to try to make sure that we don't have any extra vehicles in the driveway or try to, you know, reduce the kind of noise of the extra vehicles and stuff, having that extra bay allows for them to park their vehicle there, which extends the square footage.
So because of the three-car garage that you wanna put on, it's just naturally, the footprint above it is about 896 square feet?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Lionel?
Your existing driveway...
Yes.
Would, doesn't look like it would be wide enough to provide access to this third bay.
Right, so where I have my tree right now, I'm gonna, you know, take some of that grass that I have and make my driveway wider, and make like, kind of like a curve in, with a retaining wall there.
Are you aware of the ordinance that says that a driveway cannot be wider than 24 feet within 20 feet of the property line?
Right, and it won't be that wide. I'm just gonna widen a little bit, you know what I mean?
Mr....
We discussed the driveway, we know that they'd have to widen the driveway, and we told them that, you know, up to the front yard setback, it can't be wider than 24 feet, then it can go a little bit wider after that, but...
Right, but it won't be that.
I think we kinda penciled it out when the applicants came into our office, in office, and I believe they can easily meet the ordinance with that.
Okay, so as long as you're aware of it, that's fine with me.
Yeah, we did talk...
Yeah, we did mention that, so...
Okay, I have no more questions.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, so the other part of this is the accessory dwelling unit, special exceptions, are you, did you see those? Are you aware of these?
Yeah, I did see them, but I don't really...
All right, so let's just quickly go over that.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna go over them, and then we just need your affirmation, okay?
Okay.
So the first one for, this is for an accessory dwelling unit, and the first one requires that the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental, subordinate, and extent, use, and purpose of the primary structure does not exceed 750 square feet. We know you're here for an exception for that, but, so it would be a subordinate structure. Agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling?
Right.
Yes.
So it's a S?
Yes.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. So no new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling shall be constructed on the front or front yard side of the single-family dwelling unit. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed, and the exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building form, scale, and construction materials.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think you testified to that. The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Yes.
Yes.
The property owner shall provide the city of Nashville a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees, fees. The covenant shall read substantially as follows, there's the verbiage there, do you agree with?
They meet the code.
So that you meet the code?
That's really all it is.
Yes.
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 One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house. I think you get plenty of driveway space and garage space for parking.
Yes.
An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, I, yeah.
The single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall be separated in ownership, shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Yes.
Right, yes.
And finally, the accessory dwelling unit shall be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing, as defined in RSA 67431.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I guess just one, on the, getting back to the issue of the square footage, like if, say, if you were to adhere to the 750 square feet, you know, I'm just getting some rough calculations, instead of like 32 wide, I think we'd be at like 27 wide, you know, I didn't know if, you know, is it, is it your position that it's more of a garage thing or a space thing for your parents, that it would be, you know, problematic to limit to the 750?
I think it was more of the garage. We wanna make sure that there's enough bays and enough space in the garage, and then whatever living space we can leverage above that is what led us to that amount of space.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's no one else in the audience at all, so there is no other people, no other people here to speak with, in favor or in opposition, so I will close the public hearing at this time and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier?
For the special exception, I have no issues, I'm in full support of that, for the reasons stated, you know, I saw...
For the reasons stated, you know, I saw, so I think the applicant's, you know, well-aware of those nine conditions and appreciate you going through that. For the variance, I, I guess I'm, I'm on the fence. I'm looking to hear some other opinions tonight. On, on one hand, this, you know, again, the spirit and the intent is, for the 750 square feet is to be incidental. And I think that, you know, it seems the 750 feet works for the, for the, the unit itself. When I think of like three bays on the front, it looks a lot bigger. Is that in the spirit of what we're doing? I guess I'm just looking for opinions on that. I'm not convinced it is, but I'm open. Another thought is, given the rather, I'd almost say severe topography of this house, you know, not the house, I should say the land, the fact that the second story is really looking like the first story, you know, you can make the argument that the addition doesn't look that big because the roof line is below the, you know, the, the second story. So I, you know, try to visualize how that would look. So, you know, I'm good with the special exception and I'd just like to hear thoughts on the variance and that's where I'm at.
So I'll just chime in. Kind of the same thoughts, but then I was looking at this and, and I realized that, and after talking with Mr. Fock early, I just want some clarification. There is the, the, the three-car garage they could build, right? If they just wanted a three-car garage?
Yeah, right.
So, and if, if I was building a three-car garage and I wanted a big family room, I might as well throw a family room on the top. The point I guess I'm making is, is that this is not supposed to be discernible from the street. So let's say I just wanted to throw a three-car garage and throw a big family room up top or, you know, whatever. And so I, I understand what you're saying. I, I don't think, in this case, is my opinion, that, that this would look like, it's, it's a big addition, right? If I could put a three-car garage in my house, I would. And if I, I guess I had the extra money, I would throw a room above you. So in this case here, I think it's no different than if somebody was gonna build a three-car garage with a family room, then put an accessory dwelling unit. And I understand that because I think what would happen is obviously if they would adhere to that, somehow that, so part of that would have to be like some dead storage or, you know, part of the, the other house. So I guess what I'm saying is that I, I believe that, that in this case, for me, the way I look at it is that I don't believe that I would know any different from the front of the house that, that there's 750 square feet or 896 square feet being used in a accessory dwelling unit above that garage. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of how I was looking at it. And there was no incursions for a side setback, rear or front. So, you know, it all fits within the building envelope. So that's kind of how I was looking at that. So I, I was kind of, I, I, I thought about what, you know, your, your thoughts, but then as I was looking a little bit more, you know, I'm more thinking that this could be just an addition that somebody put on for themselves. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I think I, a similar, similar spot as you guys and I think I was kind of already fairly, pretty much, I think, at the same spot you were just noting. I think in this case especially, I don't think it will look, I don't think there'll be any real hint of there being the accessory dwelling unit aspect of this addition. And I know we've seen other cases and every case I know we judge, you know, on its own merits, but this is not an atypical thing either to have essentially some space that it's, that, you know, whether it's a basement or that kind of thing that's already either kind of exists, usually it's existing already, that, you know, again, it's something similar. It's not a gross overage, but maybe we're in the 800, 900 type of range, similar to this. And it doesn't make sense to keep people from necessarily using that space. In this case, I, I think part of the bigger challenge is it's, it's a new space, so it's not a pre-existing type of thing. But I think the motivation to have the third garage stall pretty much kind of forces that, that square footage, which then essentially creates a situation. So I, I think in the end, it's a kind of a reasonable condition and situation and, you know, and as the applicants noted, you know, really the, especially having the third garage bay is to help provide that third storage for the in-laws, which it all kind of fits together with the way this part of it's being used. But again, it won't, I think, still like shout like, oh, there's something else going on here. I think you noted, I think a lot of people would like that. You know, if they already have, you know, one or two-car garage, they'd still like to have a third, you know, ultimately, I think it's just one of those things. And so I, I guess in the end, I'm, I think this is, is reasonable.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm generally in concurrence with my colleagues. I, the only thing that I noticed as I was driving through the neighborhood is that there's a, a mix of smaller and mid-sized houses from the street. This would look a little bit big compared to the neighbors. But as Mr. Boucher says, you know, if they simply wanted to build a three-car garage there and with a family room on top, they wouldn't be here before us. So it's okay.
I concur with my colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Is anyone gonna make a motion? If not, I'll make it.
Which one are you gonna do first, so I know which one to write?
Special exception will come first. I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the special exception for John and Dawn Artur, 79 Westwood Drive. Description of John S. and Dawn M. Artur, owners of 79 Westwood Drive, shee B lot 1832, requesting the following: special exception from Land Use Code 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired congestion safety. We find that it will not overload public water drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled. The accessory dwelling unit special regulations as per testified by the applicants. And we find that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion?
It's just a minor thing, but I'd say, the only thing I'd say is you should note that the special regulations are fulfilled with the exception of the needed area variance, which will be considered. So I think, you know, we know that's what's going on here, but just from a kind of detail.
Yeah. So, so noted by Mr. Shaw. We'll just leave it as, as stated by Mr. Shaw. Do you second that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so that's seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. So that motion passes. I make a motion to approve the area variance for John and Dawn Artur, 79 Westwood Drive. Description is John S. and Dawn M. Artur, owners of 79 Westwood Drive, shee B lot 1832, requesting the following: variance from Land Use Code, section 190-32, exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet allowed, 896 square feet. Proposed to construct a two-story addition on the right side of the house with garage space on the first floor and accessory dwelling unit on the second floor. It's in the R9 zoning district. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. What we discussed was is that the applicant has plenty of room to put a three-car garage and is going to do so for the purposes of having their in-laws live with them. With that, that creates another situation where there is more than 750 square feet now above that, that space at, at 896 square feet and they would like to use that. And we find that it is reasonable and with, and with the, the property has plenty of room, there is no other incursions. So we find that, that it would fit on the property and would fit in this situation. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue than the area variance. And again, we'll note that to cut up a small section of the, of the top of the garage really does not do anything for either the applicant or for the, for the benefit of the citizens of Nashua. And we find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values or surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. Seconded by Mr. Lionel, any discussion? See none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, both motions pass. As you heard before, there is a third-day window of appeal. Highly unlikely, but if there is, just, just be aware before you start anything. But congratulations and if you need any more information, you can talk to Mr. Fock. Congratulations, thank you very much. With that, I'll close case number two. Have a good evening. Meeting minutes, right. There were some meeting minutes from December 11th, 2018. Anybody see anything in the meeting minutes? Nothing?
I didn't see anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 11th as presented.
Motion is to approve the meeting minutes of December 11th? Seconded by anybody? Ms. McKay? All, all in favor? That, that passes. That's the motion. And we have the agenda, right?
Should be there.
Yeah. For the next meeting on January 22nd. Does anybody see any regional impact? I didn't see anything, but no.
I don't see any.
So?
No.
No, okay.
That's unanimously no.
No regional impact. Okay, so that brings us to that. So the only other thing that's gonna be on our, our plate is it's that time of the year again to start thinking about officers. We just wanna, I just wanna have a discussion about that. We don't have to make, obviously, any decisions tonight, but I wanted to start the conversation, something that we have to do. And we all know that, you know, we have to have, be a full board once we get to the point where to vote, but just wanted to start that conversation. So any, any discussion? So for, for myself, I just, I'll just talk for myself. I have no designs on whether or not I, I want to be or don't want to be the chairman. I'm more than happy to serve in any capacity that there is. So again, I am in no position to say, you know, that I wanna be whatever. I, I'm more than happy. I, I enjoy serving on the board, so in whatever capacity that is, I'll do that. So again, I'm, I'm free to move around if, if there's somebody else that, that wants to think about moving, moving up. So that's my position. I just thought I'd throw it out there.
I'd throw out, I'm, I feel I'm in the same position. I'm happy to serve kind of in, in any position. Don't necessarily need to move up or down, but, you know, also throw out to folks who are not, you know, officers, if there's an interest in doing something, I'm kind of looking at Mary Ellen or, you know, I should say Ms. McKay or Mr. Shaw or Mr. Lionel. You know, I'm pretty much like you, just I'm, I'm game, game for anything.
I, I guess I'll just kind of echo that. I mean, I think I've served in all, all three, you know, positions previously, so I, but I'm, I'm fine with, with whatever also, so.
I'm, I'm open to serving however, whatever makes sense. I haven't been an officer, that, that's fine. Perfectly happy doing what I'm doing. But if, if somebody would like to consider me for an officer position, that would be fine too. I don't care.
Okay. All right, so Ms. McKay, what's your? You're always, you're always that. We're always waiting to see what Ms. McKay's gonna say.
I have no desire to be chair. Just saying.
Vice chair? Vice chair?
Vice chair.
No, no chair. Nothing with chair in it?
I like being the clerk, actually. It helps me talk less. But I like that position, if that's okay. If not, I'll serve in whatever capacity. I just don't, you know, I don't think that I'm comfortable enough and knowledgeable enough or maybe, I don't know, to ever consider taking that leap.
Don't sell, don't, don't sell yourself short.
Well, okay, we'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right, so I, I think we don't have to make decisions tonight, but it's a conversation. And I, and Mr. Lionel, I think that, I think it would be great if you wanted to serve in another position. I think, I think I, I would be personally just, next meeting we can talk about, think about what you would think that you would want to serve as, whether it's a vice chair or a chair, whatever you feel that you could serve as, unless you wanted the secretary position, if you really wanted to cover it.
What, do we battle Mary Ellen for it?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
So, so if there's, if I share a chair that you'd be interested in, I, I think that, you know, again, I think, think about it because, you know, each brings a different level of responsibility. And I guess I would say, think about it and then we can get that at the next meeting. If we're, if we're bored, we can go from there. I think that we're pretty loose and open to making the changes. It's not gonna be a problem. So, and we'd be more than happy, Jack or I would be more than happy to move around. Okay? All right.
Don't we have to do it two successive meetings?
Up two.
There has to be a motion for a slate of officers and it has to be confirmed at the, the next meeting, so.
So the reason I'm, I'm saying to push it off is that, it's not to push it off, is I don't want to put anybody in a spot, right? Sometimes we have to think about it. So if we were ready tonight, I, I would, I would do it. But then if, if folks are not kind of ready or need to wrap their head around it a little bit more, then I think we should wait because I don't want it to be something that somebody is not comfortable with in the end or regrets or move or whatever, so. But I'll, I'll, I won't determine that. I don't, I'll take some feedback now if you want on that or should we just talk about it next time or break it up again? Or would, would somebody like to make a move tonight?
I think the comment is pretty much, I would just ask Mr. Lionel what he might like to do because I think it's really maybe up to him as far as, you know, if there's a possible interest in maybe waiting to think about it, that would be the main, I think, consideration based on everything that's already been commented.
Well, now, I, I don't know what, I, I don't, I'm not ready to be chair. I'm willing to be vice chair. It was sort of what the, not worth a warm bucket of spit was that the, the comment about the vice presidency or something like that. But, you know, I, you know, if Mr. Carrier wants to stay in that position, that's fine with me.
Okay. So that's good, so that's good feedback. So Mr. Carrier, I guess what I was saying is if you or Mr. Shaw wanted to become chair, I'd be more than happy to step down. If not, I'd be more than happy to continue to serve. It means nothing either way to me. I'm just happy to be here to serve. So I guess I would be looking to both of you to, to tell me whether or not.
I'd be happy if you're willing to continue to serve. Having been in that position myself, I know it's, it's more energy than not being the chair. And, you know, my travel schedule has gone up. And so I'm fine if you want to remain as chair and if Mr. Lionel would like to be vice chair, maybe we could propose, and Ms. McKay, the clerk, I'd be willing to make a motion for that this evening.
Who do you go with that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want to cut you out. I was just reading some body language.
Yeah, no, I, I would, I would concur with that. So I'd be fine with that. And, and I think that might be, I think it might be worthwhile to just make the motion tonight and then we've got it started. We know sometimes, we've, it's taken sometimes a couple of months to get, all five of us are present.
We're here.
The fact that we're all here right now, let's take advantage.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
I'll make a motion for a slate of officers for 2019, for Mr. Boucher, Chair, for Mr. Lionel, Vice Chair, and Ms. McKay, Clerk.
Seconded. Okay, all, any discussion? See none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. So this is our first official vote on that and we'll, once we- So this is our first official vote on that and we'll, once we have the full board again, we'll make the second attempt at that vote to confirm. So that, that finishes that business? All right, that's good. Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw? Okay, we're adjourned at 7:20. Thank you.